Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the delay. I would like to call the work session for the month of March to order. The time is 7:12 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And Mrs. Fury, we have public participation tonight.
Special recognition, Madam Chair.
Oh, special recognition. Thank you. I'm sure they don't want to participate publicly.
Yes, indeed. We do have a special recognition this evening. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have several elementary school students in attendance who deserve recognition for their recent accomplishments. We will recognize students who fared well in the Elks Lodge Hoop Shoot contest and those who also performed exceptionally well in the Regional Literacy Days competition. We'll start this evening with our winners of the Elks Club Hoop Shoot. Each year, the Covington Elks Lodge sponsors the Elks Hoop Shoot, a free throw program for youth ages eight to thirteen. The Hoop Shoot is actually a national program, and children who participate have the opportunity to advance through different stages of the event. Our school system had two students this year who performed extremely well in the competition. When I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from our school board chair, Mrs. Shaquilla Henderson Baker. Evan James. Evan, whoops, we gotta take pictures, Evan. Evan, I'm gonna talk a little bit about you. Evan is a second grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School. Evan won first place in the eight-to-nine-year-old competition at the district level and ultimately came in second and in the state in the free throw contest. Congratulations, Evan, on a job well done. Evan was coached by Porter Dale's coach, Kenneth Meekins, who is also here tonight. Where is he? There he is, right there. I didn't see him. He's hiding. Thank you so much for attending this evening, and Coach Meekins, thank you for your hard work with Evan as well. We recently learned that Evan's brother made it to the regionals in the Hoop Shoot last school year, but we were unable to recognize him at that time. So, since he's here tonight, would Cedric James come forward and accept your certificate? Cedric doesn't look too thrilled, but Cedric, you did some great things, and we're happy to celebrate you. You got a smile, Cedric. Oh, my goodness. There we go. Looking good. All right. So, congratulations, Cedric James, and of course, your brother Evan as well. Yay. Camarian Mack. Camarian is a fifth-grade student at Oak Hill Elementary School. Camarian won the Newton County Competition and then proceeded to win the district competition. He qualified for the state competition but was unable to participate. Congratulations to Camarian on your outstanding accomplishment. Camarian was coached by Oak Hill's coach, Tracy Angel. Congratulations, Camarian. Next, we will recognize our recent winners at the Griffin Risa Regional Literacy Days Competition. The Literacy Days Festival is comprised of several competitions, including recitation, ready writing, and drama. These students were champions in the district competition and, as a result, earned the opportunity to represent our school system in the regional contest. This year, our students were extremely successful in the competition, so much so that we have had to break our recognition into two evenings. Tonight, we'll recognize our elementary school-level winners, and next week, our secondary winners will join us. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Lowell Howard. Lowell is a fourth-grade student at Newton County Theme School, and he won third-place honors in the fourth-grade ready-writing competition. Congratulations, Lowell. Anthony Hortman. Anthony is a fifth-grade student at Oak Hill Elementary School, and he won third-place honors in the fifth-grade ready-writing competition. Congratulations to Anthony. The next group of students comprised the Porter Dale Elementary School Drama Team. They competed and won top honors in the regional drama competition. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Skylar Hamrater. Skylar is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and she performed with the champion Porter Dale Drama Team. Congratulations, Skylar, on your first-place award. Torrin Petty. Torrin is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and he was a member of the championship drama team. Congratulations to Torrin. Preston Moses. Preston is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and he helped Porter Dale bring home first place in the regional drama competition. Congratulations, Preston. Louis Meeks III. Louis is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and he too is a member of the award-winning Porter Dale Drama Team. Congratulations to Louis. Amir Abong. Amir is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and he performed on the award-winning Porter Dale Drama Team at the regional competition. Congratulations, Amir. Phoenix Lowry. Phoenix is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and she too was a member of the championship Porter Dale Drama Team. Congratulations, Phoenix. Amaya Brown. Amaya is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and she helped lead the Porter Dale Drama Team to their first-place victory. Congratulations, Amaya. Jamir Boyd. Jamir is a fourth-grade student at Porter Dale Elementary School, and he is a member of the championship drama team. Congratulations to Jamir. We also have two other drama team members who were unable to attend this evening. Let's congratulate Chad Slaven and Callie Clements in their absence. They too were integral members of the Porter Dale Drama Team. Before we close tonight's special recognition, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some of the people in attendance this evening. In addition to Coach Meekins, Porter Dale teacher Sabrina Pruitt, who coached the school drama team, is also here to support her students. And of course, we can't leave out the Porter Dale Leadership Team, Ms. Claudia Newell and Ms. C.G. Merritt. I know they are extremely proud to see so many of their students recognized this evening. I also want to compliment Dr. Brunson for being here this evening, and we thank our school leaders for your support and for always ensuring that our kids have the opportunity to excel and to live out the vision of our school system, to be well-rounded and prepared for the future. Thank you all for coming this evening. Now, finally, you may be wondering why there are so many gifts and things and posters and signs and cards and banners in the boardroom tonight. This week is the state of Georgia celebrating the School Board Appreciation Week. We take the time to recognize our school members for all they do to ensure that our district works to meet the vision that all students will be well-rounded and prepared for the future. Listen, we are incredibly fortunate to have the five board members who sit here this evening. Every, you don't necessarily see all the things that they do behind the scenes, but I can assure you that everything that they do, every decision they make, every action they take is made in the best interest of our students and also our staff. They are incredibly important to this organization, and they help us keep pushing forward. To thank them for a job well done, our schools have provided the gifts and the, all of the decorations that you see here this evening, and we certainly hope that our members of the board enjoy them. And again, we are most grateful for your service. Madam Chair, this concludes our special recognition program.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Fury, and we are grateful to serve the community and to serve the kids. I was excited tonight at the meeting. I was saying I had turned to the side to both of the Mr. Baileys, and I was like, I like this group of parents because normally the parents do clap, but we never get the woo! Yay! So, it was really exciting tonight to get that from the audience. So, thank you, parents, so much and community members for what you do for the children. It takes a village, an entire village. So, we appreciate you allowing us to take care of and to educate your students, but most importantly, we appreciate you being the foundation to the support of their village. So, the students who got presentations tonight, turn around to your village, the people behind you, and y'all give them a hand clap for getting you here, for supporting you. Those after-school practices that you may have had, they were your transportation, right? So, thank them. But also, parents, give yourselves a hand. So, thank you, guys, for what you do. It's so important. So, now is the part where, if you would like to stay for the meeting, you are more than welcome to stay for our meeting. However, because I know some of you guys are elementary students, and elementary starts early, if you need to leave, if you got homework, now, don't y'all start making up, "I got homework," but if you have homework or anything like that, or you need to leave out, you may dismiss at this timeframe, and we're gonna continue on with our meeting. If you want to take pictures or anything, you can take pictures out there, okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. How do they tell me my credentials are not working? All right.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. Public participation. We didn't have any public participation, did we? Okay, I don't think so. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I actually need to make a motion, you guys. So, I want to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add, right below enrollment report, under superintendent's report, a presentation that we need to hear tonight regarding the MTSS program. So, adding item D there, a presentation under number 10. And I also need to amend the agenda, make a motion to amend the agenda. So, it's gonna be one motion, but I'm telling you where I'm adding things. Item J, under new business, it needs to be board report. So, my motion is, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add item D, under superintendent's report, for the MTSS program presentation, and add item J, under new business, that item J will be called board report.
So moved.
Okay. Been moved in, that's the second?
That's the second.
Okay, thank you.
You make the motion. I second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Got it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Five-zero. All right. Approval of the minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Thank you. I'll take it on this side. So, T. Bailey, first, A. Bailey, second. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Five-zero. Superintendent's reports.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Happy School Board Appreciation Week.
Thank you.
Also, good evening, Madam Superintendent. In the financial report, the special purpose local option for education sales tax distribution for last month was $1,810,310, which is a decrease of $234,435 from the previous month. The title Ed Valorem Collection for last month was $513,116. And finally, expenditures are within budget at 60.51% expended with 66.67% of the year complete. And the financials for February are there for your review, and that is the financial report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Any questions regarding item A? Okay, item B.
The strategic plan report. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Madam Superintendent, I have some highlights from the superintendent's report. The first section is student achievement and success. Newton County Special Olympics motor skills athletes participated in the Future Is Ours Motor Skills Event in February. Students maneuvered through a wheelchair obstacle course, engaged in music and movement activities, and completed various fine and gross motor skills tasks. Volunteers from Newton High School were buddies for the event. In the area of high-quality workforce, the instructional technology and media services department staff is proud to announce Andrea Doughty as the Newton County School System's 2023 Media Specialist of the Year. Ms. Doughty serves as a media specialist at Oak Hill Elementary School and has been an integral part of the Oak Hill family since 2001. In the area of culture, climate, and communication, to celebrate the diversity in Covington and Newton County, Georgia, NCSS district staff coordinated with art teachers throughout the school system to showcase students' artwork in a Black History Month art display featured at the Covington Welcome Center. NCSS students in K through 12 were invited to participate by submitting original art for the theme, "I Am Black History." Thirty-one pieces of student artwork were hung on the walls of the Covington Welcome Center. The remaining pieces of artwork are featured on the electronic monitor in the hallway of the venue. The exhibit highlights the wealth of student talent in the school system. And finally, in the area of organizational and operational effectiveness, the facilities department personnel held the inaugural Facilities University in February. The conference coordinators brought staff from each of the schools to learn together. The custodians and facilities staff met at the FFA camp on February 21st, 2023. Everyone attended a whole-group motivational session and four breakout sessions that included the topics of safety, conflict management, and preventing harassment in the work environment. On February 22nd, 2023, the staff met at Newton High School, where they selected sessions based on individuals' needs to increase work-based competencies. And those are just a few of the highlights from the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Any questions about the strategic plan report? Item C.
As of March 1st, 2023, this is the enrollment report, there were 18,714 students enrolled in Newton County schools. That's the enrollment report.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Any questions about the enrollment report? Okay. Item D, presentation.
Good evening. Our multi-tiered system of supports program is housed in the Division of Student Achievement and Success, and it is aptly directed by Ms. Kim Wilber, who serves as the district's director of gifted and intervention programs. I am extremely proud of our program. Ms. Wilber, in particular, this one, Ms. Wilber, in particular, has built the program actually from the ground up. And I received a phone call just this morning from another district asking questions about our program, which is often the case. So, she's going to take you through some highlights of our program. It's been in existence for a few years now, and we're at a point where we, with the exception of one school, which will come aboard next year, we have all of the school staff with an MTSS specialist. So, she's going to give you an overview of the program and take us through the years. Ms. Wilber?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, our multi-tiered system of supports for students falls under Goal Area 1, Student Achievement and Success, focused on the increase of our graduation rate, increased opportunities for students to demonstrate success, and improved student mastery of standards. While tonight's presentation focuses on intervention and supports for students who may be at risk for poor learning outcomes or behavioral concerns, MTSS is a framework for addressing the needs of all students. It's not just about our struggling students. For example, MTSS calls for us to continue challenging high-achieving students, and we have similar structures in place to address the needs of gifted and advanced learners as well. Work surrounding MTSS often includes language about collaborative, concurrent, and/or communicative supports, because there is an expectation that educators are effectively working together and communicating with all stakeholders to provide a unified support system. Response to Intervention, also known as RTI, and Student Support Teams, or SST, are part of the MTSS framework. Response to Intervention is a process within a system of, within the system of an MTSS framework. RTI is part of the data-driven decision-making process using progress monitoring, where team members review data to determine how students are responding to the interventions in place. It's a process to observe and adjust, either by intensification, selecting new interventions, or continuing our current interventions based on the student's progress toward a projected goal. Overseeing this work in our school with Response to Intervention, SST, are the processes where our MTSS really focuses most of their work by serving as caseload managers for students receiving Tier Two or Tier Three supports. We currently employ 22 MTSS specialists who work directly in our schools each day, with the position of Newton College and Career Academy being added for the 2023-2024 school year. So, what does this work look like in our district? Through universal screening, data are analyzed to identify students who may be at risk for poor learning outcomes. Our range of focus for the area of academics are students who are performing in the bottom quartile. We also couple this with feedback from our teachers surrounding classroom performance. Screening for behavior supports include review of historical data and collaboration with administrative and teacher teams at each school to identify students demonstrating challenges with school-wide or classroom-based behavioral expectations. That can be both academic expectations and social behaviors. Using these data, areas of skill deficit are identified, and intervention support is aligned to the student's specific needs. Individualized goals are established, and progress is monitored with a focus on independent growth and a transference of the targeted skills that we're working on. Currently, in our schools this year, our MTSS specialists have helped coordinate 3,111 support plans in the areas of academic supports, specifically targeting math and reading support plans, behavior support plans, and speech-oral language supports. In looking at the impact that we've had during our first year in this role, so, 2021, 2022 was the first year that we had MTSS specialists in all of our schools. And during this first year, supporting students and teachers in this role, we saw growth at all levels. The growth at the elementary and middle school levels are monitored using our Iowa data. So, looking at our pre- and post-data and the number of students that are performing in that bottom quartile compared from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. At the high school level, growth is measured a little bit differently. We look at, based on being on target and on track for graduation, we really monitor using our grades and the criteria for being on track and remaining on track for graduation. And so, we were able, we did see success in our students who, with an attendance rate of 85% or higher, who earned enough core content area credits to remain on track for graduation at the end of last year. We are still gathering data currently with the, with this school year. So, we're currently in our spring administration of our Iowa for third through fifth grades during this month, and then also, you know, of course, we're gonna continue to monitor our high school for each nine-week grading period specifically. Also, as you know, our school district is on a journey to becoming high-functioning PLCs in all of our schools. And so, in support of this work, specifically with our MTSS specialists, we will be responding to the four, the four questions. We will, ours will be, how will we respond when students do not learn? And so, with that, Tier Two interventions will focus on instructional strategies and interventions surrounding students' mastery of our essential standards and the essential academic and social behaviors that are established by the school-level guiding coalitions as well as the teacher collaborative teams. Tier Three supports are really targeted towards remediating skill deficits in the area of literacy, numeracy, and behavior, where students are demonstrating deficits that are beyond the current standards that are being taught. To do all of this work, it really requires coordinated efforts and collaboration with all staff. And so, our MTSS team works with many departments to ensure that student needs are met and that supports for the whole child are being addressed. Our team also meets monthly and sets aside time to discuss student cases and shared strategies so that the expertise and the experiences throughout the district is, can impact students from school to school. Moving forward, some of our work, so, in addition to those things that we're doing, we are also preparing for meeting the expectations of Senate Bill 48. So, Senate Bill 48 requires identification of and support of, for students in kindergarten through third grade that are demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia. And so, we're gearing up for that. We have numerous MTSS specialists that are currently doing the MTSS, the dyslexia endorsement. We also have some that are doing the MTSS endorsement as well. But the dyslexia endorsement, we're also working with, we've attended the trainings through the State Department surrounding dyslexia and the characteristics of dyslexia, as well as the science of reading. So, grade level and content level teams also being able to really be a part of that PLC process and our collaborative teams with our grade level and department or content level teams to support the Tier Two strategies based on the Common Formative Assessment and Common Summit of Assessment data, as well as Tier Three accommodations. So, knowing that students, some students have deficits that make it difficult to access the current content, so knowing how we can accommodate that versus modifying and reducing a standard. So, the expectation will still remain the same. And then also, serving on our school intervention teams. So, schools are developing, through their RTI process, they are gonna be developing their own, their supports of what they feel like their schools and, their school and their students need. And we will be working with that school intervention team as part of the team to design and schedule Tier Three supports and accommodations to ensure that all student, all student needs are met. And I'm not gonna read this to you guys, but you do have them included in your packet. But these, I'm gonna close tonight with some feedback that was shared by some of our school administrators surrounding the impact that they feel that having an MTSS specialist at their school has had on their ability to better serve and support their students and their teachers. And so, we have some on, there are actually three slides from elementary, middle, and high school administrators about the impact that, that their MTSS specialist has had on their work.
Ms. Wilber, if you want to pull out a couple of words from it?
Yes.
Because since this was amended to the agenda, we didn't have this package ahead of time.
I certainly will.
You don't have to read word for word, but if you just want to pull out a couple of words from us?
A couple of thing, a couple of things that they've shared is that this has been essential in really being able to be, being purposeful and, and, I'm trying, timely with the supports that the students have been able to have, and then also that their, the parents being able to have that support with, with their teachers and with parents. and with parents to know what interventions the students are having, knowing the impact that that intervention is having on the students. And then also knowing that really with a framework. So we're working with two, two specific frameworks within our district. We're working with the Professional Learning Community Framework and then also MTSS, and how those things work hand-in-hand to support our students.
That's the last slide?
That is the last slide. Okay, we have any questions from board members? Okay. Mr. Bailey's cutting on the lights first, and he has some questions.
All right, so I know it's a, uh, MTSS with the PLCs are, you said, two different frameworks, but working together and all that. I saw the, the numbers, 300, 3,000 and something different.
Support plan.
Support plans, yes. And then I saw some, they were broken down like, uh, so 400 were behavior, behavior supports. How does this connect, or does it, with some of our other programs that already exist in our schools for positive behavior intervention? I'm not sure if I got that right, PBIS?
Yes. Yeah. So PBIS really, it is the, that is your Tier One. So all of, all of our students have Tier One supports. And so with, just like our core curriculum is our Tier One instruction, PBIS is, sets forth your school-wide expectations. Now, I'm not an expert on PBIS. There may be someone in the room that's more versed in that. But that is the, the goal of our positive intervention and support is having a clear expectations across the school in terms of your Tier One.
Okay, well then maybe give me an example of what, one of these 400 supports, behavior supports. What would it look like? What is, is Tier Two?
It could be Tier Two or Tier Three. It really depends on the intensity of the need. And so with that, we may see students that, I mean, we've seen a lot of it, of students that as we've come back out of the pandemic, where maybe their background and their experiences have limited them on really having exposure to things like preschool programs or programs within daycare centers. And so we have students that maybe struggle a little bit adjusting to a more structured environment. So with that, we may have a plan where we have maybe visual schedules in place, or we have structured or planned breaks and, or we have different types of behavior supports where we're teaching the expected behavior. So they didn't have opportunity to kind of have those structures and those experiences where they would have learned those opportunities. And even, so we have to teach them. So we teach the expected behavior. So with the goals that we would set, we are teaching what the expected behavior is in a way that they, and then monitoring how they respond to those that, that taught. So just like teaching reading, we have to teach the behavioral expectations. Does that make sense?
It does. Let me, let me dig down a little further, see if I can get to the core of my question. Like, you have one teacher per school, one, one MTSS specialist per school. So we're not taking kids who are struggling with behavior issues in their class and putting them all in a, in a room together and then having that MTSS specialist come in. So that's what I'm saying, like what, they're going to come in and pull kids out and have that one-on-one interaction with them?
No, what we do typically is we work with the teacher, or we work, we also have, we have intervention support staff in our schools. And so we may do like, say, check-in, check-out with a student, where a student comes and we, we go over with them, these are the goals, here are some strategies that you would, you would need. These are some strategies that you can use for self-regulation. If you feel that you're getting upset or frustrated, then let's take a scheduled break. So we teach them strategies so that they're not, so that they, the, kind of the behaviors that they were demonstrating, so like that they don't really, they don't really know, necessarily know how to regulate their beha-, their behaviors or their emotions. We teach them strategies that help them with that. So that could be a variety of staff that's helping with that. It could be, it could be a teacher, it could be a counselor, it could be an intervention paraprofessional. It could be our MTSS specialist. So it's a variety of staff. It's, that's why I'm saying, it's a collective effort. The, the, the MTSS specialists aren't necessarily the primary interventionist for all students academically or behaviorally.
Okay.
It could even be an administrator. Like, I'm, I'm part of the MTSS process, and I have kids that I go see. And I, I do check-in, check-out with those students. And so it's an all-hands-on-deck at, at Tier Two. And the, and the goal is to put them, to get out of the Tier Two or Tier Three. So they try strategies, they monitor, they intervene, they address the level of intensity. So maybe I'm only coming once a week to do check-in, check-out with the child. But when I get to the school, the administrator says, well, Ms. Fury, Sharon has had more trouble than before. So do you think you could do check-in, check-out two times a week? And so then I'm touching base more frequently. But the goal is to stop me from having to do check-in, check-out so that when I meet with the child, I'm talking about the behaviors that we're focused on. And then I'm looking at data to see, are we making improvements? Because we want them all back in Tier One, which is where all kids are. Most of the children live in Tier One. And Tier Two is a, a level of intervention and go back to Tier One. And if at Tier Two, the intervention is not successful, then the team meets and then they say, well, maybe we can add this intervention and might take it to Tier Three, which means more intervention, longer period of time. But ultimately, we want the child to go right back to Tier One with the interventions. So it's a, imagine this, though, we have MTSS specialists in our buildings. We did not before. And so this was the responsibility of an administrator, maybe a counselor. And so for the very first time over, in the last several years, we have a very well-defined process that our principals and our schools are excited about because it's not, no longer just the responsibility of people who are already doing other things. Now you've got someone whose whole purpose is to focus on the program. And in my opinion, it has done wonders for, for kids and for our schools.
So do all of these MT, do all these MTSS specialists, is that their primary job? Or do they have other responsibilities?
That is their job.
That's their job, except for you.
So I'm not an MTSS specialist, I'm a supporter.
Okay.
I'm an interventionist.
All right.
And of the cases that we have, those are all the cases that we've coordinated supports for. But just like Ms. Fury said, the goal is to remediate the need, teach the strategies, whether it's a reading strategy, a math strategy, or a behavioral strategy, and to the point where they're able to be proficient with that independently. And so some of those cases, they have moved down in the level of intensity that they've need, that they require. They have all, we also at times will find that maybe more specialized supports are needed. So we do work weekly with our school psychologists and also with our special education staff so that in the event that students need more specialized support, that we know how to be informed when making that decision and when to move forward with that process with their, with their collaboration and their guidance. If I may, Mr. Bailey, were you finished?
I was just going to ask about funding.
Go ahead.
Just where that, like, was this part of ESER funds?
Partially. So we started this process back in 2019, the fall of 2019, with a five-year plan. And so in the, in 2019, a fall, the fall of 2019, we started the school year, so before COVID. We started with six MTSS specialists following a feeder pattern within our district. And so we have, we had them placed at, Wes, now I've got to think back to that. It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
I remember there were six.
So we had six. So we had a feeder pa-, pattern for that work. And so, so those are generally all funded. And so, but.
The rest of them, like 17 were, came once we got the ESER funds, right?
They did.
So there's a timeline on.
And, and that's, that's why we're presenting this to you. Yes. Because of the, of the things that we have talked about over the course of this ESER funding piece. There are, there are some things that are incredibly valuable to student achievement and success, and this is one of them. And so I, I felt like it was really important for the board to hear from Ms. Wilber so that you could start thinking about how, we're good for, for the next year, but thinking about how we make sure that these folks are continuing in their, in that, in their work. So it's a good, good thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I? Go ahead, Mr. Johnson. Okay.
Our caseload, do you think we need more MTSS specialists based on our caseload to do an increased level of performance?
I mean, I, I mean, it really, I, I feel like our caseload, if, if done effectively, our caseload should, I mean, there's always going to be students that need intervention and support. Right now, we, we have seen as a result of COVID and even pre-COVID gaps that we, we have a larger percentage of students that, that are demonstrating that they are at risk for low academic performance or behavioral performances. So I, it really is going to be that, you, you follow the need. So, I mean, I, I think that there's never enough support in schools. And so I don't know, I feel like this.
Well, let me ask a question another way. Let me ask another, the question. Should I be an advocate of adding more specialists on?
I, I think yes, absolutely. Advocating for that. I mean, advocacy, I mean, I don't think you can go wrong with advocating for supports that help students. And so, and I, and my team does an amazing job. I mean, we have, I, I had just four examples on the screen of feedback that we get from our schools. But every school, I could have highlighted something at every single school with feedback that I get about the work that our MTSS specialists do in our schools. They are an amazing team.
I said, I'm just going to take them out. We're not going to have them anymore. And they were like, what in the world? Like, they cannot, the schools cannot, like, they need the MTSS specialists in their buildings. They needed them 10 years ago, but the fact that we have them now is really critically important.
Any other board members have questions?
Just another comment. I'm really pleased with the performance credit recovery for the people in high school. That is huge.
Well, what we want to do is decrease the amount of students that require credit recovery. So that's where the preventative lens comes, is that getting ahead of the problem before it becomes a larger problem. And so in many schools, our graduation coaches oversee that work. And so we try to be proactive in making sure that we don't have a lot of kids that are having to repeat courses because the first round of it, they did not meet, they did not get credit. So they end up off-track for graduation early on, and they're playing catch-up. So that's what we don't want to happen. And so that's where this is more of a preventative lens than it is. And in my high school, at the high school level, I mean, they, they're working with those students. They're one-on-one. It's, it's, it's kind of a, a coaching type of approach that facilitates between the student and the teachers. You know, sometimes it's just figuring out how to organize their, their work and turn, turn work in and being kind of that liaison between, between the teachers and the students. And so, and the parents. So it's the collective support of really wrapping our arms around the kids so that we don't end up in a situation where the choices that are made have negative consequences that they don't really even fathom, fathom and can understand at the time.
One other comment, I'm going to be thorough.
Okay.
Is there a working, working relationship with the MS, MTSS and the after-school program?
Potentially, but I don't know that there's a direct connection.
I don't know that there's a direct connection with that. I, I would have to talk more directly with the MTSS specialist in the school because they, they know the school staff and how they're coordinating their supports within the school, quite possibly. But at, from the, I would have to talk with them about that. They would probably be more of the expert on that.
Okay, thank you.
That piece. Okay, any other questions or comments from board members?
Just a quick one on Senate Bill 48. I'm glad to see us, we've had some conversations recently about, you know, recognizing dyslexia earlier in K through three. We, we were seeing it in seventh, eighth grade and just, you know, saw some of the problems that that was causing. What, what is the plan? Like, if it's going to be training for MTSS specialists, as you said, there's a dyslexic certificate or whatever, but there's some sort of endorsement. So they would be able to recognize it sooner, is that the point?
Right. And then we also went, we delved down very deeply with that, with our assessment committee. So assessment was one of the subcommittees with our district guiding coalition. And that was one of the major pieces that we looked at when we looked at our universal screening tool. And so we, we're currently using Iowa. And so moving forward, we will, we will make sure that the tool that we have, so we have some tools through FastBridge, which is the tool that we use for RTI anyway. So we have that tool in place. And within that, we, it has the rapid naming, it has the decoding, it has the encoding tools that we would need to be able to early identify students. And then there are also some automated tools that we use already with all of our screening with RTI and then can do it more broad, more widespread with all students with auto-reading. So in addition to like our adaptive reading assessment, there are things that will catch and kind of flag students that are, are demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia. Now, we will not be diagnosing dys-, dyslexia. We will be looking for the characteristics and then also aligning then the interventions and supports to, to, to meeting those needs.
That's, that's very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for board members?
Okay. Here comes my question. This is the joy of being the chair, you let everybody else go first. So, so my first question, Ms. Wilber, actually has to be, deal with the dyslexia endorsement. Currently, how many of the MTSS specialists have completed and passed and have the actual endorsement?
Well, Griffin Reza this year had an opportunity that through their ESER funds, they were able to offer grants for the endorsement. So I currently, this year, have three MTSS, MTSS specialists out of my 14 going through the, the dyslexia endorsement. Through that, though, in a similar fashion with our collaboration and our MTSS collaborative team, we identify dyslexia as a, as a need through a subcommittee. So we, we are working with, in a subcommittee. So those three individuals are serving as experts for our team in addition to the DOE's training surrounding science of reading and dyslexia that has been available to all. And that I'm also working in collaboration with a university that will come and do some training with our full team. So there will be parts that there are definitely expertise within those three individuals that are, that currently have that knowledge, but in hopes to grow that, that, that group as well.
Okay, perfect. And then the other one is not a question, just some comments. I like to pull out, I'm glad that you included comments from building leaders. And I actually wanted to pull out two, a couple of sentences from two of the building leaders, only because a lot of times we hear presentations and then parents who are watching, they don't, they're not privy to seeing the comments as well. But then the other thing is sometimes parents or people in the community say, oh, they said all of that stuff in the board meeting, but it's not working at the building le-, level. And I want to read specifically what the building leaders actually said, which is part of what you guys were explaining. So Dr. Curry out at Veterans Memorial Middle School. Having an MTSS specialist at Veterans has been a benefit for our students and teachers. Our MTSS specialist focuses on closing foundational gaps that have to be closed prior to students fully mastering grade-level content. And then a comment from Mr. Cher at Eastside. MTSS framework provides a process to identify and address gaps in student learning, especially when students are not performing at grade level. For struggling students, the MTSS process is a net that supports both the individual student performance and a classroom teacher's effort to teach new content while addressing gaps in background knowledge. So thank you for providing these comments in here.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilber. Great, great presentation.
So if, if I may, Ms. Fury or Madam Chair, so right now, I just want to reiterate, we have six that are funded generally. And the remaining 16, it'll be 17 next year are ESER-funded. And those that, of course, will run out next year. So we, the plan was for us to incrementally add, but with ESER funds, and thanks to Dr. Thomas, allowing us to add that to the, to the grant funds. But I just, you highlighted the importance of them. But it, we, we're keeping the momentum going. But we will come back at a later date to ask that we be allowed to keep them and that they be funded generally because once the ESER funds go away, the 17 that we have, 17 of them will have to. of them will have to go away. So I just wanted to close with that.
I like how you did it, Mr. Roundtree. You kind of felt the room and then said, let me remind y'all, I need some funding. So, okay, thank you so much. We got it. Thank you. Okay? We do not have any old business. We'll move on to new business. Item A.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. The superintendent recommends the approval of the purchase of auditing services from the Georgia Department of Education with a total cost of $33,211.73. A program-specific audit is required in accordance with the Single Audit Act of 1996 for subrecipients that expend $750,000 or more in federal awards in one fiscal year. The audit will review the school system's financial statements and expenditures of federal awards and ensure compliance with these awards. Purchasing documentation is provided and the funding source is identified, and that is item A, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Any questions for item A? Item B?
Item B, the superintendent recommends the purchase of educational support resources from Carson Delosa Education. The total cost is $247,640. This relates to summer bridge activities, which are designed to help students review the essential skills of their current grade level and prepare them for the next grade level. Students will engage in both familiar and new content so that in addition to maintaining already-acquired knowledge, they will become better equipped to encounter and process new material when it is presented to them in the following year. This is for take-home materials for those students. And this is, the purchasing documentation is there for your review and the funding source is FY 2023 Title I funds. And that is item B, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for item B? Item C?
And item C, the superintendent recommends the food and milk needed for the school system be purchased from Gordon Food Service, Samples Foods, and Borden Dairy LLC. Total estimated cost is $1,579,902.39. The school system will continue to use established contracts that were previously reviewed and approved by the Board of Education during the current fiscal year. This deals for strategic goal area four. Purchasing documentation is provided and all of this, the funding source for all of this is school nutrition program funds, and that is item C, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Any questions about item C?
Just, this is an add-on to this year currently. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Is this, what will this do to our budget as far as?
The school nutrition program has the funds to accommodate this because it's based on reimbursement.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for item C? Item D?
And item D, the superintendent recommends the contracts for painting services at select schools be awarded to Ideas Painting of Lawrenceville, Georgia with a total cost of $105,950. A solicitation for contract for painting services at select schools was opened March 9, 2023. The schools include Mansfield Elementary School and Newton High School. The project consists of painting select areas for each school. That includes both the interior and exterior of the buildings, including the gymnasiums as well as pressure washing, the exterior of the building, including canopies, columns, sidewalks. Upon approval, the project is scheduled to begin on May 30, 2023 and expected to be completed before July 14, 2023. Six vendors participated in this solicitation and those bid responses are included there for your review. Contract documentation is provided and the funding source is identified, and that is item D, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for item D?
I had, I did email the superintendent, so I just wanted to at least get it out there that these bids were all over the place as far as, and I know you can't control that part, but this was a low bid, both for Mansfield and Newton. I mean, 40% low at Mansfield and almost a little over 50% low at Newton. And I know, I mean, you guys have used this vendor before, right?
Yes.
Satisfactory work, bonded, insured, all the stuff.
They've done exceptional work for them.
They got some free paint or something somewhere.
And Mr. Bailey, for the record, when I looked earlier and saw the contract, and it's a huge difference, they did way underbid, it's a huge difference. So when I saw the numbers myself earlier, I actually went to their website, I went to their social media, they have an Instagram, and I also looked for any kind of reviews that they possibly had, like, because it was, it's a low bid. So I had the same concern. And it seemed to be they had good feedback in the work on the website. They had done something for the Atlanta watershed. I think it's on the Instagram. It was another major place, a basketball court somewhere. So I looked at a couple of the things. So, and to add, they are a minority. I know sometimes people have questions about a business, they're a double minority, if I'm not mistaken. It's a Hispanic-American female that owns the business.
Well, if it's great work and cheap, let's just keep them on the speed dial.
For us and for other school districts, they have historically been a very competitive company. So we're glad that they participate.
They give us a deal and they mark up other schools?
No, no, no. Competitive in all school districts. They're very competitive. Yep.
No, that's great.
Thank you. Any other questions for D? Item E?
And item E, the superintendent recommends the contract for the construction of a softball field for Clements Middle School be awarded to Sports Turf Company. Solicitation for a contract for construction of a softball field for Clements Middle School was opened on March 7, 2023. The scope of work consists of the construction of the new softball field located behind the school. It includes installation of new sod, playing surface, infield, dugouts, irrigation system, fences, and sidewalk connectivity. Two vendors participated in this solicitation and those bids are there summarized for your review. This deals for strategic goal area four. Contract documentation is provided and the funding source is the approved 2023 capital funds budget, and that is item E.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for item E? Item F?
And item F, the superintendent recommends the contract for track and field. That would be easier if we could just do that. That's right. Just trying to shortcut it. The superintendent recommends the contract for track and field improvements at Alcovee High School be awarded to Sports Turf Company Incorporated, total cost of $590,544. The school system will use a contract managed by Sourcewell, a national purchasing cooperative for track improvements. Project consists of removing the existing track surface and installing a new track service. In addition, a concrete pad will be poured around the track along with the installation of fencing. Contract documentation is provided and the funding source is approved 2023 capital funds budget. Item F, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for F?
I don't have a question. Yes, I do. We review the other fields as well for maintenance, see if they need improvements, maintenance work.
Yes, sir. I know that's an ongoing process, and so when those tracks and other athletic components need work, then we bring those forward and include those in the budget. So I know Dr. Everett and Mr. Rains meet with all of our principals and review their facilities and make sure that they're getting the support that they need.
Do we have, put them together and prioritize them so we can see what's happening?
Yes, sir. And, yes, sir, we did that maybe five or six months ago, and so we periodically bring that forward to you so that you know what the needs are and can make sure that those needs are aligned with what we're requesting in the budget.
Can we see that next week?
If I can, well.
I'll just ask the question.
Yeah, no, ask your question. I didn't want to cut it off.
To put, we're in the process of putting together a, that information now, an updated version in preparation for ESPLAST.
Yeah. I had a very similar question. Just, you know, we did, again, look at it five, six months ago, and so when I saw it on the agenda, I was like, wait a minute, did we already, like, I know we already talked about it, did we not talk about it? Where did we land? And so I would love if there was a, first of all, the superintendent sent us a website that was relatively new, a link that, and that's, is it public link?
Yes.
Okay, so Newton Schools, NewtonCountySchools.org/construction?
Yes.
All right, so NewtonCountySchools.org/construction, and you get pictures and updates on all the projects we're doing. And that was great to go see that for myself. So I encourage other people to check it out because it helps see where the tax dollars are being spent and ESPLAST dollars and everything else. But if I could at least echo something of what Mr. Johnson's saying, if there was a way, something we could, we could get our hands on easily without having to go through assembly and dig through all the agendas to find the notes of the fifth or sixth month ago meeting, like the prioritization of the projects and just kind of where we are on them, if, I don't know if that can live somewhere, certainly you guys are doing this all the time, so if there's a spreadsheet or something that's easy for us to just access?
Right. Yes, sir. We can get that.
Okay, thanks.
And all the projects for this year are outlined in the capital fund budget. And so I could resend that also.
The, just the date, the numbers data, right? Like, here's where we are in the budget?
That's right, yeah. Those things that are priority for this school year.
Right, but not all of them that are not even started?
Mm-hmm, yeah. They're all in the capital projects budget for this fiscal year.
The single page at the end of the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Item G?
Item G, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for grounds and athletics, fuels, care, and maintenance awarded to Brightview Landscape Services Incorporated be renewed for another term. The effective date will be March 1, 2023. Expiration date, March 20th, that's not correct, 2024? Let me make that note. And the estimated contract value is $842,829. Contract documentation is provided and the funding source is there for your review, and that is item G, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Barr. So in item G, the date will be corrected for next week.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for item G? Item H?
And item H, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. Item H.
Thank you. Any questions with H? Item I?
And item I, the superintendent recommends the approval of personnel matters as discussed in executive session.
Okay. I need a motion for item I, please.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I need to recuse myself from number, double check, 892.
Okay.
Yes, 892.
Mrs. Coggan needs to recuse herself for number 892 on the personnel list.
I need to recuse, sorry.
Go ahead.
I need to recuse myself from line 238 for.
Relative, you can say relative response, yeah.
As my spouse, yeah.
Okay. And I was going to say Mrs. Coggan has a relative. So 238 for Mr. Trey Bailey. He needs to recuse himself from that number. Wait, that's the right number, right?
That's the right number.
Okay, making sure I got it right, Trey. Okay, and I need to recuse myself for number 838. I also have a spouse that's a educator. So 838 for me. So we have 892 for Mrs. Coggan, 238 for Mr. Trey Bailey, and 838 for myself. Have the motion on the floor and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five zero.
Okay, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
All right. So, I got to get myself situated. After much careful thought and consideration and reflection, I have decided to retire from K-12 Public Education effective June 30, 2023. One of the most fulfilling endeavors of my life has been to serve as the superintendent of the Newton County School System for the last 10 years. It's an emotional time because this is 31 years of my life that I've dedicated to the children of Georgia. And while I'm excited about the future, I'm also kind of sad that I'm leaving our school system and the team that we have here, my team that I work with every day. So forgive me for being a little emotional. I'm going to try to get through what I have written. So from each of the board members with whom I have served, I have been challenged to improve the school system for our students, staff, and community. I thank each of you on our board as being thought partners and working together as we problem-solve and tackle the many, many day-to-day opportunities we have to improve. I'm extremely proud of the impact of our collective efforts and that we've always worked so hard to achieve our mission of educational excellence for all students and work diligently to make sure our students are well-rounded and prepared for the future. Not only have I served as a Newton County School System as a grateful employee, I've also lived in Newton County for about 30 years, and my daughter is a graduate of our school system, which I want everyone to know is a hallmark of a great school system when the people who work in your system put their children in the school system. We have an incredible school system. My daughter is fabulous, and we have worked together as partners in the classrooms, in our schools, as board members, and each one of us have played a role in her life, just like we do in the lives of the children we serve. My efforts invested in our school system have added value and have been aimed at ensuring our county is a great place to live, thrive, and work. The partnerships established during my tenure with the cities, the county, the Chamber of Commerce, local businesses and industries, and other state and local agencies will continue to bear fruit for future administrations. I would like to acknowledge and thank the incredible members of the Newton County School System team. I am most grateful for everyone's dedication and commitment to our students and community. You have made my experience as superintendent the best in the state and nation. We have made incredible strides together, and I know that the impact of our work is long-lasting. I would like to thank our teachers, our custodians, I know this is going to be a lisp, and forgive me if I left anybody out, operations and maintenance teams, the procurement team, the school nutrition team, our bus drivers, bus monitors, substitutes, paraprofessionals, school psychologists, social workers, the OTPT team, the speech team, the special education team, student services team, the instructional team, the student and family support team, assistant principals, principals, school counselors, instructional coaches, technology, the technology team, human resource and finance teams, coordinators, clerks, administrative assistants, including Mrs. Maria Shepherd, who just joined my team, and I love her so much, Ms. Tanisia Fennell, who is just my love. I love her so very much. She works with Mr. Roundtree, but we are a true team, like, we take care of each other like nobody's business. And of course, Mr. Geneva Guthrie, who retired in December, our MTSS specialists, bookkeepers, transportation team, and last but not least, our bus maintenance team, especially our mechanics. They are the behind-the-scenes team that quietly goes about their work ensuring the safety of the children who ride our buses, and they are unsung heroes, and they oftentimes are not acknowledged for the work that they do, and I'm grateful that I've had time to work with them specifically over the years. A special thank you is owed to the leadership team of our school system. This team is extraordinary, and I am fortunate to have had their support for the many years I've worked alongside them. I would be remiss if I didn't offer a word of gratitude to the executive support team, and they're here tonight. Their expertise and willingness to work together to meet the needs of our staff and students are unparalleled. You all are absolutely amazing, and thank you so much for an outstanding 10 years. I'm confident that the Newton County School System team is strong, and our students will benefit directly from their efforts. Together, we have made a difference in the lives of the children we serve, and it is my hope that in the future, in any endeavors that I may undertake, I will continue to positively impact public education as I so strongly believe in the immense benefit to the citizenry of our county, state, and nation. I always say, and I have said, public education is the most important thing that we do for our communities. So thank you so very much for bearing with me on this very momentous occasion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Fury. I am going to open the floor. We are still on item I for now for comments from the board, if anybody have any comments. Okay, Mr. Bailey, I have to go last all the time.
So polished and professional over there. I don't have that tonight because I'm mad at you. I'll get over it, but I'm mad at you. So I had to write some of this down. I've had the privilege of serving alongside Ms. Fury for the last seven years, and some pastors and theologians see that number as very significant. Some ancient Near Eastern cultures, like the biblical Israelites, saw the number seven that indicated fullness, completeness. And for you to even consider retirement from this position, then you have thought it through, and it must be complete. You've fulfilled your mission with Newton County School System. It's been an honor to watch you lead at such a high level. It's been humbling to see how effortlessly you display the character of a true organizational leader. You have great integrity, a great family support system. You've built an incredible team here, and together you guys have produced some incredible results, like the Georgia Superintendent of the Year and National Finalist. You and I have not always agreed on every decision and not always. You and I have not always agreed on every decision, and not always aligned on philosophy, but you've always listened. You are open to my thoughts and ideas, even the crazy ones. I don't know how many times you've told me in your office, "Mr. Bailey, we can't do that. We just can't do that." But I count you as a close friend and someone I admire greatly. You have led through trying economic times, education disruptions due to a global pandemic. I mean, we don't want to go back there. We've grieved the tragic loss of faculty and students, and even one of our own board members, our friend and mentor, Alman Turner, who would love to be here right now, by the way, patting you on the back and saying, "Job well done." So we've been through a lot of highs and lows, calm seas, and stormy weather, and you have been a steady captain of this ship and crew. Contrary to what some people believe, you have led apolitically. In other words, you've never made decisions based on political leanings or the noise of the media. You always did what you thought was best for children. Your first thought is always, "What is best for our kids?" And people will never know all the times you personally gave of your time, your energy, money out of your own pocket to help kids in our system. You didn't mind helping the one, even if you couldn't help everyone, because you saw each kid individually. And those kids' lives have been changed forever. No one can ever question whether or not you cared, because you care deeply. You have a huge heart for kids and their future successes. It's always been obvious to anybody who's around you that you care deeply. So whoever is next for Newton County, they'll have big shoes to fill. I don't know if anyone will fill those ruby red slippers, or make us think about hedgehogs, or challenge us to remember extremely long acronyms that are basically just the fruit of the spirit. And I like how you hid that in there. But we won't be looking for another Samantha Fury, because there's only one.
Right.
Whoever comes next, they'll do things differently, they'll say things differently, but they will have to stand on your shoulders, and they'll have to respect the foundations of greatness that you've established. So Newton County School System is better because you've served. This governance team is better because you've served. Our community is better because you've served. I'm a better person because you've served. So from the bottom of my heart, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for serving here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Who wants to go next?
Well, you know, it's very hard to follow that speech. Thank you. And no, I didn't write anything down. But this isn't a sad occasion. This is a time to celebrate.
Yeah.
And I know the things that you plan to, you will continue to work in education, just not in the K-12 avenue, and so very excited for you. But again, this is a time to celebrate because you're not moving. You're still gonna be here. And so we still have her here for her guidance and her support, so. But yes, it's been a wonderful ten years, and I want to go ahead and tell you, my daughter, I let her know just a few seconds ago. She's very upset. She needed one more year.
Yes.
So you could sign her diploma. So I told her you would have to deal with her.
Yes.
Directly. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I'll go. So, um, let's see. We have been through a lot from the moment I second the nomination for you. And I don't regret it one bit. I'm so grateful to have the opportunity for a superintendent like you to serve our community and the students. The life cycle of a current superintendent, a lot of people don't know, in their superintendency, I see Mr. Roundtree back there saying it, is three years. It's three years, and not a lot of people know those statistics. But because of my heavy travel across the state nowadays, and even nationally going to school board conferences representing the state, that is something always spoken of. And so to have someone vested in your school district for ten years is not the normal at all. To have somebody who lives in the community that they work in as a superintendent is not the normal at all. To have somebody who has their kids attend the school district that they are superintendent of, believe it or not, is also not normal at all. So you have been surpassing what statistics say should happen, and I appreciate that. You have served with dignity. You have served with class. Mr. Trey Bailey already hit. There are things that, that as a board or as a superintendent, you have gone through that a lot of superintendents have not, and you remain resilient through it all. And I'm grateful for your resiliency, because that becomes contagious to the rest of us. If we see the leader being resilient, that as leaders at this table, we have to be resilient as well. Mr. Bailey mentioned that the community doesn't get to see all sides of Samantha Fury, the superintendent, and they don't. So I just want to share a couple of sides that the community has never saw. We had a student that Mrs. Fury was going to the high school to see, who was a student, I like to say at-promised student instead of at-risk student, but kept getting into trouble, and he found his way into Newton County Jail. And Mrs. Fury went over there to visit the student. You don't get superintendents to do that. Nobody told her to go visit him, to go check up on him. But those are the stories that the community doesn't hear. We have a current student that was about to drop out, was way behind, and family just could not support him like needed to. Mrs. Fury went to the house of the student. I see Mr. Roundtree back there shaking his head, now she drug, she drugged Roundtree with him, with her. He did not know he was going. But she went to this young man's house, y'all. This young man is now on track to graduate from the Newton County School System. But not only graduate, but because of her partnerships in the community and her respect from people, he's gonna graduate with his high school diploma, diploma, and have a certification, a plumbing certification?
Welding.
Welding certification. So he'll have the opportunity to have a good-paying job. That's beyond what a superintendent does. But not only that, Mrs. Fury also paid for his graduation photos. And this young man was so excited, because he didn't even know he could take graduation photos, and that's the one thing he wanted to do. And we think of that as a little thing, but for a student who was about to leave us and about to drop out, and you didn't have to go over there and do everything you did, that's beyond the expectation of what a superintendent does. And those are the things that the community members do not hear about and do not know about you. But that is nothing short from some of the things that you have done in the past for other students. To see a superintendent at events, again, I travel all over this state in school districts, to see a superintendent at events, supporting students, people don't get that. So I appreciate the work that you have done academically. I appreciate the work that you have done in terms of the support, and I appreciate the work that you have done in terms of being a person in the community. I've been through two superintendents. It's a big difference. I respect the other superintendent. Now, I didn't hire him, but I respect him, because I came while he was already here. But to give you an example, that was a three-year superintendent. And he was never in the community. And to have somebody come and show up at almost every single thing, not send somebody else, but go yourself, that's a huge sacrifice, and people don't get that. That's a sacrifice from your own family. That's not a requirement. So we appreciate you doing that. I appreciate you doing that so much. So, thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for giving us your time. Thank you for giving us your heart, and thank you for showing us that you truly value education and you truly value our mission, excellence for all single students. So, well done, Mrs. Samantha Fury.
This should make trips to the grocery store a little easier.
I haven't been to the grocery store in ten years.
So we amended the agenda to add item J, board report. So now I guess you guys realize why we added board report. So the main job, one of the main jobs of Board of Education members, the main legal job of Board of Education members, is to hire and fire a superintendent. We're not firing her, but a record. But that is how it's written in the Code of Ethics and the law. With that being said, the board members are the only people that can hire a superintendent. So all discussion in terms of hiring is always held behind executive session or in executive session. So I just want to kind of lead out to help the community understand next steps. So Mrs. Fury had told us ahead of time, so that we can start preparation in next steps in terms of where do we go from here. So the board has had a discussion of where to go from here in terms of how do we get our next superintendent. And so with that in mind, I'd like to ask, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to have GSBA be, operate our superintendent search.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, that GSBA be the people rewarded a contract for the superintendent search.
Ms. Anderson Baker, I just wanted to, for the people, that's the Georgia School Board Association. Is what GSBA stands for.
Correct. So I want to, before I call for a vote, kind of spell out some things with the GSBA. I want to read from a contract they provided. I have not signed the contract yet. However, we've had preliminary discussion in executive session. So the scope of duties. GSBA will promptly and professionally conduct a search for a new superintendent of schools for the district involving the solicitation of applications, processing of applications, screening of candidates, receiving recommendations and evaluations of candidates, performing evaluations of candidates, and submitting a report to the district's Board of Education with respect to those candidates of all the applicants which GSBA determines would be appropriate for consideration by the board, taking into account the size of the district, the magnitude of the job responsibilities, and the expectations of the particular board. An independent review panel may be selected by GSBA to assist in the evaluation of candidates. More specifically, GSBA's duties shall include the following. In consultation with the board, that's all five of us, establish a timetable, assist in determining criteria for selection, advertise vacancies and procedures for application by posting on the GSBA website a fact sheet listing qualifications desired in the next superintendent, and information about the school district, and by distribution of such document via email to a GSBA database. Process applications, provide assistance in structuring and the screening and interviewing process for candidates, arrange interviews, assist in establishing the decision-making process, but without participating in it. The participation will only be from the five board members. Notify unsuccessful candidates, schedule appointments with candidates if needed by the board, prepare confidential evaluation rating of all candidates based upon board-approved criteria. So there'll be a dialogue amongst the five board members. What are we looking for? What do we desire? What does the community want? Provide an oral report of results of checking personal, personal and professional references of the finalists. Conduct a session between the board and superintendent to facilitate a smooth transition and strengthen the leadership team. This will be offered, scheduled within the first one hundred days of the superintendent's contract. District responsibility, so this is our responsibility. District shall fully advise GSBA of the district's expectations, special qualifications, talents, educational background, experience, and other characteristics and attributes which the district, acting through its Board of Education, desires with respect to the successful candidate. So to help the community understand, the GSBA person, who is Dr. Sam King, a lot of people are familiar with Dr. Sam King. He was superintendent in Rockdale County, and then he went on to be a superintendent in the state of Virginia. He still lives in Rockdale County. He does the superintendent searches, so he's very familiar with our community. He will have a dialogue with us of what we are looking for, education-wise. Do they need to have a doctorate, not a doctorate, experience, not experience, in-state, so those type of things. Respond timely and fully to all inquiries submitted by GSBA. Designate one individual as the contact person with whom GSBA may communicate for information, direction, and assistance from time to time, and promptly furnish to GSBA copies of the job description. So those are some of the things in the contract. So also, I want to make a statement, because I want to make the record known to help you guys understand my role with GSBA, because a lot of people know that I am president of the association. So GSBA operates a lot like a school district. So just like we are board members, they have an executive leadership team. The executive leadership team is the operational people. So their executive leadership team is composed of Valerie Wilson, Dr. Sam King, as he does superintendent searches. The board is myself. So just like I'm chair of this board, I'm president of the association, just a lot larger, because it's the entire state. So I have, I am not privy to any information prior to the search. It is just like when we have board meetings, we all learn information at the same time. We all learn candidates at the same time. I want to make that very clear. Currently, when Dr. King presents, for example, GSBA is doing a superintendent search in Decatur City and the CAB. When he presents to the board, he says, "I'm in the CAB. I'm at the interview process. I'm in Decatur City. I'm at the interview process." I do not get candidates, because by law, the only people that get candidate lists are those specific board members in their executive session. The law clearly states that. So I just want people to understand, it's the same setup. So I don't have any information prior to the board members. Plus, this will be a discussion amongst ourselves in executive. We, as a board, have elected to keep the community as transparent with the process as possible. And I only say "as possible" because, because hiring is an executive session function, there will be certain things that we cannot release, candidates on the list, finalist candidates. When we can list, uh, release those candidates, we will. But other than that, but we'll continue to release any other information that we are allowed to by law to be transparent to the community. So, any other discussion? Having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. All right, none of everybody can woo-saw. Other matters of interest? We'll know how to come after that, right? Okay. With that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Okay, been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero, media adjourned, eight thirty-nine PM.